Please rise. Do a prayer first. Dear heavenly Father, that come before this morning to say thank you for your love and mercy and grace may do. Lord, ask you to watch over the God that strengthen us with your Spirit. Lord, help us to follow your will and not our own. The Lord just help us come together as a community, grow together as a community, and work with one another hand in hand. Please forgive us of our sins and shortcomings in Jesus's name, amen? Praise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Make me seated. Stand at the appointed position. Sheriff Clark, good to see you.
Good to see you, sir.
Been awhile, been awhile. I put these on, can't do nothing without them. One, Warner.
Here.
Dave Bruce.
Here.
I'm here. Approval of minutes, guys, I've already read the minutes. Have you just looked over the minutes?
Yep. Move to approve.
Got a motion to approve the minutes. Call for a second.
Seven.
All in favor, aye. And approve. We're gonna go through payroll and claims. We had an extra payroll last month. The payroll is totaled three hundred and eight thousand twenty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents. Record claims, two hundred and fifty-six thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars and three cents. Out of cycle claims, or utilities, insurance, Visa, Toshiba, First National Bank, hundred and ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-four cents. Total payroll and claims, seven hundred and sixty-four thousand eight hundred and six dollars and fifty-one cents. Anybody? Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, need a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Of course, everybody knows here I never do anything according to the guidelines or stay in order. We got a long meeting here today, so we're gonna change some things up today to take care of business. Pam Rogers, you're here today. We'd like for you to come forward. You have a few minutes to present your case, or whatever you need to talk about today in front of commissioners and the county attorney. Fifteen minutes? We got fifteen minutes. Thank you.
I would be delighted.
Good, praise God.
I'm here because there are still some unresolved matters.
Yes.
And today you're going to be looking at BCA, MPC, appointments, as well as alcohol board and lead. And in preparation for that, a part of what had been understood was the territory determination made regarding those people already holding positions as to whether or not all of those positions and all of those people are eligible, or if they are not able to hold those positions because of either the elected position or former position. We have all of that information.
Sure.
And we were supposed to be getting a determination from council for each of those board and membership.
Turn your mic around, sir.
Sorry about that. To determine what that is. And so far, I've not received that, and I had requested that, and I believe the commissioners said that that would be made available before we could went forward. Second thing is, in the same meeting in which I read my letter to the Board of Commissioners, a rather engaged conversation happened afterwards in preparation for these appointments that are coming forward. And the Board of Commissioners had stated that they would be posting on the webpage that these positions would be open, that there would be information posted regarding what qualifications they had to have. So whether it's a certain party, location where you live, but none of that information got posted on a website. Now, at the last meeting, it was stated that you can send an email in, send an email in to Sheila if you're interested, but it was really expected from what had been expressed by the Board of Commissioners that there would be more to this, very similar to you get an excellent job on posting the alcohol board, an application and questions, but this was left out to dry a little bit. And I know that several people did apply, and the only feedback they got was just a confirmation of receiving an email. And I brought a copy of the transcript, but I don't wanna linger with it because you had said, hey, there will be interviews, we'll limit to five minutes per person. A person that we're considering for appointment will have to come forward at a public meeting and talk to us.
That is correct.
And...
It's still gonna be that way.
Okay.
I haven't changed anything.
So when you stated that today there will be appointments made...
I didn't state today to be appointments made. I didn't state that at all.
I believe that in the last meeting...
It doesn't make it different.
Right, the last meeting, as long as that's clarified, because it was stated that today there would be appointments made for the BCA, Plan Commission, and the Alcohol Board. So whatever we're doing, just so we're all on the same page, but I would appreciate a feedback from the attorney. The next question I have, sir, on the same meeting, I asked questions, one of those was challenges regarding some of the matters that were not voted on, or things that had happened and questions I raised. And in that meeting, you stated to the attorney, you asked the attorney to look into the comments that I had made to address, so he could address the situation, and to get back with us, sir, on your advice. So you asked him to respond back to the Board of Commissioners to give you your advice. And this was in regards to the letter that was sent to me initially and the follow-up. And my standing on that at this point is, you, he has not reported back to the Board of Commissioners because the meeting of the Board of Commissioners have not come forward together to say what that advice or recommendation was. And the last thing on this is, I don't recognize the council as being counsel for Owen County. On January the seventh, plus or minus the first meeting of 2025, the Board of Commissioners only voted to retain this council for six months. And after six months, there's been no extension, there's been no, nothing brought forward to the community saying that these services are going to be extended. So on July seventh was the end of sixty days. I just received an email from county attorney making a determination for the commissioners. And during the first paragraph, I'm paraphrasing, he indicated that one of the primary reasons alone that I would be removed from the Plan Commission is that I never took an oath. And that's untrue, and it's known to be untrue because you have copies of my oath. So for the council to come through and say, Ms. Rogers, you never took an oath, therefore you can't be on the Plan Commission, that's out and out incorrect. And the email I'm getting from the attorney is not coming underneath the signature of Board of Commissioners. There's no reference to it being from a county entity or a county authority. So these are matters that I wish to have addressed, and I'm waiting your response.
No, no, I'll go to your first one. I'm sorry, we don't live in a perfect world, and I'm sorry we can't address your needs on a daily basis, on a timely basis, on the four hundred and thirty-seven emails that we receive. I understand your concerns, Pam, but you need to understand something, and I've told you this over and over, and I'm gonna tell you again today. We're trying to address the situation, but you know, we have like fourteen thousand situations going on in this county.
Yes, sir, I do, and I know this is one that's been going on for a long time.
I'm speaking now. So at your first thing, you talked about deployments. I went back and I read the minutes myself, I listened to them, and I know exactly what I said. And we're still going to talk to people. We have the names of everybody. So today, we're not being appointments made today. We're gonna set up a time for all the people that's...
Thank you.
Excuse me?
I said, "Thank you."
So that'll be done. I know it doesn't fit your timeframe. There's a lot of things that doesn't fit people's timeframes, and we're gonna be addressing some things that's gonna make a few people extremely uncomfortable here in a month. But guess what? It's time that rubber meets the road. I've added with a few things, the commissioners have been thrown under the bus too many times. It's over, and we're gonna address those issues in the public meetings. So for your second part of that question, I'll refer to the county attorney.
I was appointed as county attorney, and I remain the county attorney until the commissioners say otherwise. As to the issue about your status on the Plan Commission, a letter was sent to you via email and first-class mail that explained exactly what was happening, what the determination was. That issue was not appealed by you, therefore you are not a member of the Plan Commission for the reasons stated therein. If you wanted to challenge that, you should have done it, but it's too late to do it now, so the matter's resolved.
Okay, in response to that, as I stated in my email, I came forward to the Plan Commission and indicated that in order for me to take my challenge to the court, that there were other matters that had to be addressed, and the false statements that were made in the letter stating that five members of the Plan Commission said "A," and a Plan Commission member came forward and said, "That is a lie," that's quote. Those matters were put before the Plan Commission to evaluate, and it was stated in your responses that these matters would be taken under consideration, and after the attorney advised you, they would get back to the Board of Commissioners with his recommendation. That process hasn't happened, therefore this phantom thirty-day time period for the letter, it was indicated that that was somewhat stated by the Board of Commissioners, and that's what I'm bringing forward. I understand the legal position of the letter, but I'm also presenting that because the Board of Commissioners had indicated that they were going to take the comments under review and get back with me, that hasn't happened.
Yeah, I was...
Let me finish, please, sir.
Aye.
And I do understand you have a lot of things on your table. You tasked me with one thing in the very beginning, and that was to address the membership of the BCA and the Plan Commission, which I have been diligent about doing, that's why I came before you today, but I also wanna go on record to state that although the attorney says he is your attorney until, I forget what he just paraphrased, he was only voted in to be an attorney for six months. That's in record. So if something else has transpired, you may want to change that. I'm not an attorney, but according to my records, he's not an attorney after July seventh because he was only voted in for six months, and because the letter he sent me stated that I had never signed an oath, and that's a lie. An oath was signed, it's recorded, and it's in recorder's office, and that other matters that he said was conduct was proven to be false. So I'd like you to please take that in consideration, but thank you for giving due diligence to...
I do wanna have something.
Yeah, thank you for giving due diligence, to giving time to select...
Okay. Let's go back to the, I'm the one that suggested you be on the Plan Commission. I thought you'd do an absolutely wonderful job, you know, and I still, I still give you a lot of credit for a lot of things that's come up, but I'm not gonna take it away from you, okay? But I reviewed the minutes as well. You was never voted on by the Board of Commissioners.
That, I made that point, that is correct.
So here's the legality of it, and I'm not an attorney, you was never voted on by the Board of Commissioners, so you never can serve on the Plan Commission because you wasn't voted on by the Board of Commissioners. I checked that in reference to myself, and I'm not an attorney, I...
I agree a hundred percent, sir. I'm the one that brought that forward and mentioned it to you.
Time out, sir. Just time out. You wasn't voted on by the Board of Commissioners to be on the Plan Commission. Our fault. So we have to go back now. I reviewed the minutes, I reviewed what I said. If anybody out here sitting in this meeting or listening on land is perfect, please raise your hand. I make mistakes every day, and I'm sorry for the mistakes I make. I ask for forgiveness and move on. I'm not gonna sit here and dwell on this. We did vote on you, and we should've, in that commissioner meeting to vote whether you're gonna be on the plane. We did not, so you can't be on the plane commission because you wasn't voted on by the Board of Commissioners. That's in the, we have to go back and review our other appointments as well.
Correct.
So it's not just you, okay? Don't want to think...
No, I agree.
So we gotta go back and revisit all of that.
That was my recommendation to you.
Okay, so that's something we have to do now, okay? So you're not on the Plan Commission because you wasn't voted on, so it's a moot point.
But unfortunately, that's not what the letter says from council.
I understand, he's addressing that. Mr. Attorney, if you would, sir...
Sure.
I'd like to ask you a question.
Yes.
Would you consider staying on as the county attorney, at least through the remainder of 2025?
Yes.
Commissioners, I'm asking the county attorney if he'd like to stay on. I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
All in favor? Aye. So we'll get that done today, Pam, that way we know he's our county attorney from here on out.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
So while I'm at that, deployments for the Plan Commission, BCA, and Alcohol Board, we have everybody that has submitted their interest in that. The commissioners will be addressing the Situation Act in this meeting. We're gonna set up a timeframe, we're gonna bring these people in. Everybody will have ten minutes to present why they wanna be on the board or such and such. I think that's good. I went back and reviewed my minutes back in June, and that's what we stated that we would do, so that's what we're gonna do. There'll be no appointments made today till we set up a meeting with all these people that can present their cases to us, or their findings, or whatever you wanna call it. Then we'll make our choices at the next commissioner's meeting.
One other thing, the current setting folks that have been dragged through the mud, we need to reappoint all those folks, just so that everything's clear.
I agree.
Okay, so during this process, let's do that, too.
Yes, I agree. So we got that out of the way. The jail people, I appreciate you being here today, but you know, I'm gonna kinda hold you just back a little bit because this gonna be a lengthy process, and we can clear maybe some other stuff out. Right and remake. Here's a guy's got the million-dollar answer to a ten-million-dollar question.
Appreciate the opportunity, as always. That's the information there. Really have a lot of information, but I wanna get to the most important piece of the conversation. So just a little history, we've been fortunate to be your benefits broker for twenty-five-plus years, and our responsibility is to go and advocate for you and with the different carriers that we represent out in the marketplace for your different benefits. So for the last five years, you've had IU Health Plans, which was the benefits division of the IU Health System, and it really has been a terrific match in many ways, from claim service standpoint, although there've been a few exceptions, to locking in rates for a first four years, two periods of two years apiece, and then we secured last year after Anthem had made the announcement that they were going to purchase IU Health Plans. So with full knowledge that this was gonna happen, we wanted to help negotiate another two-year rate guarantee, even knowing that Anthem was gonna be taking over the full acquisition on January one, 2025. We have it in writing from IU Health Plans, in emails, the signed document that you signed that there, that, and they have full knowledge of the Anthem transition, okay, transaction that was gonna happen. Then unbeknownst to us, the Anthem acquisition takes place first of the year, totally expected that, no problem. Then you and we get an email from Anthem saying that they're not, in so many words, they're transitioning from IU Health Plans to Anthem, and therefore it's gonna be on the Anthem platform. So immediately, we responded and said, first of all, are you kidding me? We've been representing Anthem with a significant block of business for quite a while, all right? Not till allow us to know first so we can communicate effectively instead of something with an email. That happened, whatever, five weeks ago. Since then, we have been very aggressive with Anthem in regards to our full expectation that they honor that second-year renewal, even though they're absorbing IU Health Plans, and they're saying, and we've shown them document after document of emails, et cetera, they're saying, well, they, excuse me, they can't make that guarantee to us. We're saying that if you don't give us that assurance that the IU Health Plan's second-year rate guarantee is not going to be embraced, then we will openly, as far as our responsibility is concerned, to seek legal counsel against Anthem, and this is a company we've been representing at a really high level for a long time to do the right thing. This is a simple, in our opinion, a very simple thing for them to honor, okay? They, we are giving them two more weeks with your approval, and we have other groups in your same situation, so we're advocating for all of this block of business, that they give us assurance that they'll do that. So in preparation for that, we are already prepared to go out into the marketplace, if needed, with United Healthcare and CIO. In the state of Indiana, as I've said before, unfortunately, because we're not a very good, we're unhealthy state, right or wrong. Love this state, but that's just what the insurance companies think from a medical standpoint. Most carriers don't wanna be in it. So we really only have a few different options, both from a traditional standpoint and a partial self-funding standpoint. and a partial self-funding standpoint. Anthem and UHC are the ones that have a national presence, a national, they're capitalized very highly. They have the technology. I would be, we were thrilled that it was Anthem that was going to purchase IU Health Plans and not another carrier. Because they have the wherewithal, we have the relationship with them, et cetera. They have a national network, just like UHC. So we are prepared to go out accumulating the information we need that if we don't get the guarantee that they'll honor that second year, one, we will seek, not on your dime, on our dime, because it's the right thing to do, legal representation against Anthem. But two, we'll be going out to market to make sure that you know what the options are. So we know that Anthem will give us an offer because they'd love to have your business, all right? You guys are loyal insurance to, you guys have a track record of being really loyal to insurance companies that you decide to do business with, and that says a lot, okay? So I'm just being totally transparent. We're talking to them virtually every day. We will be in communication with you, and we've, again, we've given them that two-week deadline. I made a decision not to bring in legal representation until we allowed this to play out. My judgment was that they were aware enough at a high level of our concerns that this will get resolved. I believe it will get resolved to honor what they should absolutely positively, no question, honor in a period of time that will allow us to go out into the marketplace to see if not, for whatever reason, while legal representation is doing their thing, to make sure that you're prepared to take a look at the rest of the marketplace.
Sure.
I entertain any questions.
So all the employees sitting here and listening, don't panic. And we will let you know as soon as we know. Our phones and emails have not quit because everybody needs insurance. So please, just keep in constant touch with the Commissioners and us. I don't care if it's every day, just so that we know that our employees aren't paying.
Yeah.
Second part is, can we have whatever we go out and market and get budget hearings for 27th, 20th, and 29th? And because this might become legal, could drag out. So I at least would rather put in what our worst-case scenario would be when we're doing our budgeting process. So if anything...
Yeah, both easy requests. And the absence of coverage is a non-issue. There is nothing that will deter... Anthem will in fact take over the plan. So you'll have Anthem cards, you'll have all of that. You will be an Anthem client for behind the mirrors, behind the curtains. You are with Anthem, but still under the IU Health Plan. So the good news is there is no disruption. I'm really glad you brought that up. That's not even a concern. It's really them honoring what they shared with us that we have in writing, very specifically, that you signed, that the two-year rate guarantee, as long as you do the healthy results at the end of the year, which you guys have always done a great job with. To me, this is a no-brainer.
Well, I got a couple of questions for you. And I'm not an insurance guy of no means, but if it's such a no-brainer for Anthem, why haven't they jumped on board? Is my first question. And even though we're still going to have coverage, of course, it may be up to the discretion of Anthem of how much our premiums are going to be. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
And I know you guys have represented Anthem for many, many years, represented us. You've been loyal to Trump, and I appreciate you very much. Why hasn't Anthem just said, yeah, we're taking this on its contract, got another year with them? Then after end of 2026, then we can negotiate the new contract. Why haven't they got on board?
Same question we've had. We've, I mean, just honest engine, totally disappointed in that. Totally disappointed that they have not reacted more favorably. I would say the last two weeks, we totally have their attention. I would love to tell you, when I say it's a no-brainer, it's a no-brainer in my mind. It's a no-brainer in the written documents that we, the emails and the written documents that we, on their behalf, as a representative of them, that you signed and we signed. So Sam, I don't think I answered your question, except for the fact that we're doing everything we can. Anthem is a big, 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 big company, and not just in the state of Indiana. And if you're telling me you'd like me to put pressure, more pressure on them with engaging legal representation now, instead of waiting, my discernment of two weeks, which was based on what I perceive to be lots of optimism that they're going to end up doing this, I can call an attorney right away. I just don't want it to disrupt the momentum, the optimistic momentum I feel is going on and will be the result that should have been made right away.
Well, I trust your opinion, Ron. I guess my next question is going to be, let's say Anthem says, and we're not going to honor... I mean, we're going to cover them, okay, but it's going to cost them twice as much.
Yeah.
They could say that.
They could, but you've got, we've got a really knock-on...
You got a tight situation?
We're in a really good situation right now from a claim standpoint.
Okay.
You've had, again, I can't perceive every new diagnosis that's happened in the last month or two. But this is a really good story for Anthem, quite frankly, and UHC or SIHO to absorb right now.
So...
So you're in a good position for any carrier. And if Anthem would be dumb enough not to give you a competitive offer, they'll lose that business like that because another carrier would...
Two weeks from today will be the 21st. We'll have another Commissioner's meeting, so...
Yep, and I'll keep you in touch before then.
So my next, my last question for you would be, let's say Anthem says, no.
Yep.
For whatever reason.
Yep.
Of course, we have budget hearings coming up here at the end of the month. Insurance is always the biggest...
Yep.
Bill that decides to pay her off. How long will it take for you and your team to get us a quote or plan or some ideas from other carriers to cover us?
Yeah, great question. We're already going to start, if I didn't make that further. We're going to go out and already, we've prepared the information to get out. So I, we're going to have a pretty darn good idea by the end of the month. And you said the 27th to 28th?
Twenty, yeah. Budget hearings the 27th, 28th, maybe the 29th. We have to have another day, is that right, Paulie? So, but our next Commissioner's meeting on the 21st. I say, Ron, by the 21st, that's two more weeks.
Yeah.
You bring us an answer one way or another, and if they don't, they don't want to play ball.
Yeah.
That's what attorneys are for.
Yeah, totally, totally agree. I won't take up any more of your time, but you'll see, I mean, any other questions first? You'll see the claims information. You're at, again, without seeing what the new diagnoses have been the last month, which I would not be privy to, you're running really well. You're running really well. So you can see that the total year-to-date premiums have been $923,000. They've paid out $624,000 in claims. That is a excellent year from a claim standpoint standpoint. So even more reason, quite frankly, that they should just do the right thing. Should never have gotten to this point. Other thing, just as we look at the benefits coming up to New Year, your group life insurance, voluntary life, and long-term disability are a rate hold until 2027. We've gone back to the dental and the vision carrier to get a quote, hopefully to guarantee their rates through 27. And all the Aflac voluntary business is a rate hold. So we had set this up very specifically so that with all your budget needs, that we have a really good story to tell from a benefit standpoint, from the quality of the benefits packaging, the enrollment process, and the rates. But this is obviously a big piece of it, and we're doing everything we can. And we'll do what we can to keep you in touch for sure.
I appreciate you, Ron, very much.
Vice versa. You're welcome.
Two weeks, thank you.
Feel free to reach out for any other thoughts or any other conversation you want.
Good.
Thank you.
Another thing I want to bring up, I appreciate you, Ron. I got faith in you, brother. I know you're going to work hard to get it done. Is, I was on vacation for a week, and Dave was on vacation for a week, too. So we missed a week of getting some things done. I know dispatch ladies are here. I don't want to, you guys have to stay all day if you don't want to stay all day. You can stay all day if you want to, but that's it. We're talking about the 911 director position. Monday night, the council has a meeting, and I think they're going to go over the wage study Monday night. Are you just going to, whether you adopt that or just talk, are you going, you going to just talk about the wages?
The wage study that we just received, it should have got...
All right, we've got it, but are you just going to, are you going to vote on it Monday night? Or are you just going to kind of review it?
We'll just review it. I mean, when you say vote on it, are you talking about us?
You're going to dissect, you're going to dissect the wage study when we do budget hearings. Is that correct for different peoples? The one thing about the 911 director, and I'm not talking about anything or checking nobody, but these Board of Commissioners need to sit and meet with the Board, the 911 Board. Personally, I read the proposal, and it's not about, it's not about you two. It's about the criteria to be a 911 director. As a city commissioner here, I'm not going to see the county go backwards. Counties went backwards too many times. We're not doing it. I'm not, I'm just one Commissioner. These guys vote, they can do whatever they want. I've been around long enough to know that the county's not going to back up. We may have to regroup a little bit, we're not going to back up. Qualifications of 911 director are established, and it's a very, very important job. One of the biggest jobs in the world, in the county. And I hate to see us back up on qualifications or the criteria to be a 911 director. Also, we're talking to the council, are going to be talking to the council. I'm not sure what the rate is going to be for the 911 director. Do you recall what it says in there?
Michael, look it up. I mean, there was...
As one city commissioner, the pay for a 911 director has to meet the needs of this county. I mean, it costs money to retain people, to sheriff setting back there. They know what it's like to pay their men and to pay them out of wage where we don't lose people. But also, you have to be able to pay people enough to bring people into the field that's qualified to do the job. So I will not, as one Commissioner, lower the criteria for, to being a director or lower the qualifications or the standards because that just puts the county going backwards. And I'm not, I'm not going to be a part of that. But with that being said, Matt, I'd like to get together sometime next week, if at all possible, and meet with the Board. It may be in the evening, we have to do that. We've got a busy schedule next week, especially with the jail project. And I'm going to sit down and talk with the Board. So if you'd get with the Board and find out a good time. Dave don't get off work till 5:00, he'll be in town.
6:30.
So it may have to be 6:30, 7:00. Let's please meet with the Board first and discuss some of the issues at hand with the Commissioners. And that way we can proceed, that way you also know the direction that we need to go in. Yes, I might, I agree with that. I didn't want to leave you in here hanging all day.
Current director is 62, 535. And with the new wage study proposals midpoint would be 66, 743. High would be 73, 417.
So you go from 62 to 66, maybe to 70, something like that. That'll change the whole, that could change the whole dynamics. You know? But lowering the qualifications is not a substitute. That is the county going backwards. I do, I do agree that they need to make a good wage, and whatever the wage study is. I know that the AIC, they created a wage study, free. I suggest people look at that. So I'm not taking nothing away from you too late, please, it's not what I meant to be. But we're not going to lower the standards or back up on the qualifications. I think we need to put the money where the mouth is and get a good figure out there that we can attract more people, better people, or if that's what you want to call it. To see, not saying that you're not fit. But I don't want to put the cart, I'm not going to put the cart in front of horse, if that makes sense. You guys, I agree with that. So, Bear.
If you guys want to wear the last council meeting, if they did vote to give these two ladies of increase for the extra workload that they put on, and it was retro back to May 29th, I believe it was...
Was that tabled, or is that...
I didn't think you guys voted on it.
We can't do nothing about that. That is not in our bailiwick. But I will say this, nothing against what you two are doing. Did Matt Miller or the EMS director get any extra money? For what they've been doing to help out the 911 situation? I know Matt's wanting to suggest, but that's not the question I asked. I asked the question, are they getting any extra money? I'm sure there's, and don't get me wrong, I'm not discrediting what's going on. But the simple fact of it is, there's a lot of people doing extra work, trying to keep this county flowed, doing laws and ends and this and that, so on and so forth. I hope that's going to be addressed as well. It will be from the Commissioner's standpoint. Nothing against you. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we'll be addressing that come budget time and stuff like that as well. I thought it was tabled, I didn't know it got passed.
So during budget hearings, I believe I have them on the schedule for April 27th, which is that Wednesday, can we be to be able to come as well as Matt and Chris? They're up that morning, I had you locked in like a monkey in 3:00 p.m.
And I appreciate what you've been doing down there to help out the cause and stuff. I know it's been kind of a disarray for a while. Talked to the sheriff, talked to Matt about certain things. Sheriff's got a couple of ideas as well, and we'll see maybe what plays out there. I just think we need to address the picture and the whole, and not piece bullet together. You guys got any other, anything?
No, I'm glad you guys got your money. I left that meeting feeling like it hadn't been passed, so...
That's, that was my understanding, I didn't think it was passed.
I'm glad that you guys got that.
Yeah, it's absolutely nothing against you two. Okay. Diane, what is the thing that you got you need us to do or shouldn't have done or could have done?
We've got the order reestablishing the precincts.
Yes, okay.
And there was some wording that was in the last one that was done that the state wanted us to change, so that's been added to this time.
Okay. This is an order reestablishing the precincts, so there were some verbiage missed out. It's been rewrote. The county attorney's looked at it, it's all good. I'll read it real quick. So Indiana Code 311-1.5 requires that the boundaries of the precincts be established revising compliance with the law. And where as pursuant to Indiana Code 3-11-1.5, one county by and through its Board of Commissioners has determined that's necessary and proper to establish and revise the boundaries of certain precincts for the county. Now, therefore, be ordered by the Commissioners of one county, one county by and through the Board of Commissioners, establish and revise the boundaries of certain precincts with the county. A precinct description and map of the boundary of each precinct submitted to the Indiana Election Division is attached here to and incorporated herein by reference. My God, such words. The order becomes effective upon approval of these precincts by the Indiana Election Division, provided that no objection is filed by a board of the county with the Indiana Election Division by noon 10 days after public notice of the proposed precinct established order. Or if a timely objection is filed by a board of the county, then upon the... Or if a timely objection is filed by a voter of the county, then upon the approval of the Indiana Election Commission after hearing pursuant to Indiana Code three dash eleven, one point five. I make a motion that we sign this order reestablishing the precincts. All in favor?
Aye.
So be it. IPAB and Flores plan. Sheila, you wanna address this?
It's just the Indiana Public Insurance Program that we're part of. It's part of the payroll process. There's two different papers there that have been signed. Provided by John Farmley and Liberty Mutual.
Can I review those too? Yeah, no, I've, I've reviewed.
You already reviewed, you got, sorry, I thought you said you need to review. And we're, this is out of my bailiwick here, I'm sorry, that's, are you, are we good with this, sir?
Yes.
Gentlemen? Is your motion? Need to look at it? All right, I'll make a motion to accept the Indiana Public Insurance Planning Membership Agreement.
I'll second that.
All in favor? So be it. Not fair to clip going with them. There he's gone. Thanks for looking up around here. It's all the same thing though, goes together, don't it? Okay, radio project bids and pending contract review, that's on you, sir.
Yeah, I've reviewed it. I've reviewed the contract. I think I sent each of you an email explaining an issue.
Yes.
If you guys are comfortable with that, you can proceed.
I'm, I'm fine with it. Is Chris here today? Chris, lunchtime?
Did Chris get that same email?
We're just here to discuss the radio project update. He has reviewed the J and K contract, he's okay with it, he's got his questions answered, is that correct, sir?
I was.
Are you okay?
Yeah.
That's kinda a big question.
Well, I'm as okay as I can normally be, right? So, right now, I think as you guys maybe can remember, we've got we awarded the tower project.
Yes.
And the, and J and K's, so right now, we're waiting on, on like the radio components to be built, assembled and sent to J and K. We also are waiting on the tower to be built. So we're looking probably another, at least another month, month and a half before the tower's built and the base is put in and then they start stacking. I did get a, just a while ago, we got a quote for a generator. I asked him, I said, does this need to go out in the bid? And he's like, no, he said, 'cause it's something to do with whether you guys wanna go out the bid or not is... But he said something about acquisition of equipment. Didn't have to go out the bid on this, so that, I'd refer that to the attorney. But in our budget, we had twenty-five thousand dollars allotted for a generator. And he sent me a quote for a price on a generator and was wanting a signature and I said, I didn't know if you guys would sign it today without looking, you know, just bringing it to you today. I didn't know if they would sign it today, so...
Yeah, we'll have to review it.
Okay. So I will, I've got three copies. I'll give you these. And that's pretty much where we're at, we're just waiting on stuff to get.
As far as the J and K contract, you're okay with the J and K contract?
Yeah.
I make a motion we approve J and K contract for the radio project to continue the process. I'll say. All in favor?
Aye.
Sheila, that was what you were saying, you didn't know if we had signed contract yet, is that right? So, so we'll have that, I'll get it, send it to Terry and he can send it on to J and K. So there's really nothing else. You can see, we had twenty-five thousand in the budget allotted for that generator.
Yes.
As you can see, it came in under that.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
That's all I've got on it.
Hang on, jail guys, we're getting ready to start with you. This guy, this big guy's like, man, God damn it. Sorry, brother. The human resource position is tabled, we're gonna be coming before the council. This just went on and on and on. They need more information, so we're bringing some people to present their case to the council on the human resources position. Highway departments are gonna have to wait, I'm sorry. Fellow commissioners, as you know, we're having the new dome that's been recoffered, windows, new roof's gonna be put in. Got a lot of work going on, they've been working on it for quite some time. The whole entire project is two million, seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, some odd cents for a love of it, it's a lot. The insurance has sent us money to make some payments. We're at the payment process on this, the dome is done. They're tidying up the copper today. It'll be done, the painting of the windows should be done by Friday. They're gonna start removing the scaffolding on Monday. Once scaffolding is removed, takes a month to remove the scaffolding, they'll start tearing the roof off, getting the roof done, so on and so forth. They'll be completely, they won't be, not be done with the project by the Apple Butter Festival. But all the fence, everything will be down, cleaned up, so the Apple Butter Festival will proceed as, as normal, okay? But today, we need to approve a payment of one million dollars to Precision Construction, that is part of the agreement of the contract. This contract was not, was not N O T established by this board of commissioners. Okay, but we have to honor the contract. It was an insurance claim sometime go, well over a year ago. I voiced my concerns about the contract to Mr. Farmley of the insurance company. I voiced my concerns about how things was handled. But nevertheless, it's an insurance claim to be paid out by the insurance, we're under obligation to pay this company. There's nothing I can do about it, I've checked into it, it's a legal binding document. Nothing against the company, it's just the way it came to play. I didn't really approve of, but anyway, I make a motion today that we approve a payment of one million dollars for the courthouse dome project. I'll say. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Sheila, that's a million dollar payment, we'll make the precision today on this project. Okay, thank you. Two million, seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. I will give you the exact quote.
What they give us was less deductibles and stuff.
They're still holding... They're still, the insurance company's holding half a million dollars till the completion of the job when we get it inspected. So they'll be holding that part.
Do you want that done out of cycle?
Do what?
If not, it'll be the two, the people that will go out.
It's not outside. We don't do outside plans. I'll just tell them today, they'll get their money in two weeks. If they don't wanna work for two weeks, no, they'll, they'll be fine with that, so... Okay, Greg, how long will it be on, you go ahead and come on up, Greg, that way you can get going and do the things you need to do. Then the jail people are coming up. Maybe. Hey, by the way, my wife made cookies and cupcakes over here, so please feel free to come over and eat a cupcake, cookie. Have a good time.
Good morning, commissioners. Just real quick to let you know, spoke with the town of Spencer in regard to the sycamore tree over here on the corner. It's got some dead limbs in it.
Yes.
They will be removing the dead limbs out of it for us today. We'll clean up the brush this afternoon as well as some of the other weeds in the yard when they're done, finished. Our bucket truck just didn't long enough to do it, so they were glad to help. Kelly Road is completed, it's got the drainage in and all the pipes. I've notified E and B paving of this, we have stopped, we're in, we're working on Pleasant View and now putting pipes and ditches in. I will fill a few potholes on Kelly just to, you know, make it a little better till the asphalt company can get there. Commissioners, we have the quotes for the emergency on the U-Nott Cataract Road. If you choose someone today, we'll start pulling the berm on Pleasant View Road because we're gonna use the dirt up there. And everyone, I've talked to each of the contractors and instead of us piling it, causing, causing extra work, they'd like us to do it and dump it right over an edge in a specific spot. So anyway, if you choose to do that, we'll start pulling the berm as soon as tomorrow.
Okay, I'm hoping that one interrupts you. He's, he has to look at, you have them in front of you?
Yep.
But while he's looking at these and he's gonna read these, I do have two stipulations. Well, one really. I've gotten several calls about it. They closed the road, yada, yada. Now they piled stone up in the middle of the road. And I said, yeah, there's a good reason for why they piled stone up the road 'cause some people drive through it and move the barricades, they drive on through, but they don't put the barricades back. If everybody would move the barricade, put the barricade back, it don't work, it's a safety issue, it's an extremely safety issue. We're gonna choose somebody today, but it's gonna be under a stipulation that they start immediately. This is not gonna be, we're gonna start two weeks from now. No, they need to understand that this, this job needs to start immediately because it's probably gonna take a couple of weeks to get the job done. But we need that road opened back up ASAP, especially for emergency transports and stuff like that. But for the welfare of the community itself, a lot of people have to drive around this long distance, so...
It is hindering the school buses out of...
It is. So whoever we select today, you step out there and call them and you tell them. And if they can't do it, we just pick somebody else. It's an emergency situation. Look, county attorney, review that, you guys got some information there as well. Big man, you might as well have yourself a cookie, okay?
I have one.
You have one too?
Oh, yeah.
Uh-oh, look at this guy. Now, look at this guy, all fit and trimmed.
I said, are you guys comfortable with every one of these contractors? Is there any of them that we should stay away from?
I have looked at, I have, I have taken every contractor that I know of that you've received a bid from and I have taken them up to the site and we have discussed each and everything personally. So unless there is somebody that has put in a quote that I am unaware of, then yes, I am.
Have you worked with all of them before, though?
I mean... I have.
And you're happy with what they've done for us in the past?
There have been some issues, but those have been resolved and spoke about prior to them giving quote.
You see I'm after here, I don't wanna do it and then we're not happy with the results.
That is correct.
Okay, so...
On the material list sheet, Greg, you gotta itemize that on what's gonna be used and stuff like that at nineteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars. That is not part of their quote.
That is not part of their quote.
That's just their labor.
That is just their labor. We are furnishing the material and with that nineteen thousand dollar quote, gentlemen, that does not include using riprap. That is, that is including the product that we are getting at no cost from Indiana limestone fabricators. We will have to, we will deliver that to them, but we're capable of doing that.
So the riprap, their lime, the cost there is eleven thousand dollars if we use riprap?
Yes. I have to see what you have in front of you, Sam, I'm sorry. Yes, if we were to use the riprap instead of, we would need to add eleven thousand dollars to that.
Okay.
So the first bid is from Andy Nam's Excavating for thirty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars. Second bid is from DuBois Excavating for twenty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. Third bid is for Fender Excavating for twenty-seven thousand dollars. Next bid is from Guardian Specialty Excavation for thirty-seven thousand, fifty dollars. And then Greg, you said there was this materials list?
Yes.
That's all we got?
Gentlemen, each one of the contractors was given a copy of the materials list. And as I say, we met up at the scene. I have worked with all of these. Gentlemen, I have full confidence in Fender Excavating, so I would just ask that you accept their quote. And I can step out here or chat can and make a further point.
Which one are you recommending?
Fender.
Fender?
Man, you got thoughts?
Was, was he gonna do, was he gonna widen the road as well, Greg?
Yes, that road will be widened out to twenty-four feet across.
Reset the guard rail.
Well, some of them put it in there, but I don't see it on his list, I'm just missing. Make road wider and make less that. Okay. I see it now. These numbers you've got on the stone, is that true across the board or just that one quote?
One more time.
The stone, these estimates here, that's, that's true of no matter which one we pick, right?
That is correct.
Alright.
Call Fenders. See if they can start Monday. Monday's a good day. Tomorrow'd be better.
Have you had any more problems up there with them driving over the stone, through the stone, around the stone, any of that?
Uh, not now, now that we have three piles, no.
That took care of?
I do. I noticed that the road has slipped more.
Yes.
So I'm glad it's closed. I spoke to a lady that was very demanding, but after I told her why we was doing it and stuff like that, she, she was very understandable about it. I know it's.
Gentlemen, you made the absolute right decision.
We'd have somebody off and they'd call. What else you got for us, Greg?
Just a little bit of a preface. Now, we know, we talked about it at budget time, Commissioners, but it appears that motor graders, from the last time we leased them, will be almost double. There has been an option, if you guys would entertain it, where I could follow up on that. I've already started to follow up, but I'd like to see you entertain this. We have been offered to continue a lease on the current graders that we have. We've had them since the renew, but they've never had, each one of them's had the same operator in it. I could tell you everything about those and keep it relatively at the, the same cost. If that is something we could entertain.
You're saying if we were with somebody, it's going to be double, what was being done?
Gentlemen, we have, I, I spoke to Caterpillar yesterday. I've spoken to John Deere and Jomatsu. And I can guarantee I don't have the absolute solid numbers in, but motor graders will be double at what they were five years ago. So I, I think our best option is to lease the ones that we have again. And if we do that, then at the end of that, it would be basically like a dollar buyout lease and we would own them.
So how old are they right now? Three? Three years?
Five.
Five. How long will you want to lease them for?
They could lease them and keep it about the same money for four years.
For four more?
Four more.
Will they last that long?
Oh, absolutely. Gentlemen, the county bought a new Holland Road grader nineteen eighty-three and we used that dude every day that long. And it finally became time to get rid of it. It was maintained well. That's one of the things we have to do. We have to remember to maintain them. If we don't maintain them, it's not going to last. But we purchased a used one-twenty that is now ten, twelve. Yeah, twelve years old and we keep the maintenance up on it. And we do not have any problem with that machine. So I, I think you could really look at these road graders at owning them, you know, fifteen years if we went to that, but I just, instead of another lease, that would at least keep us at about the same money, if you would entertain that. And I just have to get the paperwork to you. I just know it's budget time, so I wanted to let you know that that's what we're finding out.
And Jomatsu will be twice as much?
Yes, sir.
That's not nice.
It wasn't what I was hoping for, right? Yes, sir.
What kind of timeframe you looking at to make this decision?
You have till February.
Have February.
But we needed to start early because it was a lease and because of budget hearings, so. And it took a while to get Caterpillar in. We just got this information today. So it's not something that has to be decided today. I just wanted to, you know, just for the sake of the budget hearings.
Well, we have to make a decision here real soon. The budget hearing's just around.
Right. Terry Fender said yes. Terry Fender said he can start Monday. Excuse me, gentlemen.
Say that again?
Terry Fender said he can start Monday.
I want to make a motion here real quick to approve Fender Estabating LLC for a total of twenty-seven thousand dollars.
I second.
Call Fender.
Hi.
And they'll start Monday. Get that out on the page, webpage, whatever it is. Let people know that Fender Excavating will start on this Monday. We need to make sure they're there.
I'll make sure. I'll talk to Terry before the day's out because we're alert. I'll know before the day is out where this dirt we're going to be replaced. So we go and start pulling that berm tomorrow and deliver it up there.
Awesome. Anyway, we could get an estimate out on the website of when he thinks he'll be done, barring any major.
He told me, and I could already tell you, he told me when he looked at it, everybody had a different idea, but he thought that he could have it done in about seven days.
Okay.
Well, if you put it out there for seven days, they're going to hope to do that seven days. You know what I'm saying?
I'm not going to say, but that's what he said. So let's say two weeks.
Put out there three months.
Roll back yourself in the corner.
Gentlemen, just, school has started. You know, we have the normal bus complaints with brush and weeds. Guys were pretty far behind on mowing the weeds, but we are doing it every day. The whole patchers are running and we continue to work on the CCNG roads. We've got some of the smaller projects that you guys have brought to us that we've been able to jump in line and get done.
I have talked with the attorney about one road there that we're having issues with the farmer.
Okay, good.
We'll, we'll talk about that here after a bit, but we're going to try to get something put together there. Because I'm not going to tolerate the farmer's field every time it just dust rains. I'm just putting four to six inches of mud on our road. We can't keep doing that. Understood. I'm not going to go out there every time it sprains. Scrape the road and pull it down, scrape the road and put it down, or we're feeling coming out on the road. So something's got to be done about it. I'm going to talk to this gentleman right here. We're going to.
Thank you, sir.
And we're addressing schooling road. We already went out there and got that line located and all that stuff.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Just an update from my end of things for the county highway, because we're coming into budget hearings for the public to know. I'm going to be putting together a list of roads for you. Not CCNG roads. You know, we got, we're getting cut probably on the CCNG where we know that, so. And I'm, I'm putting this out there because of me, not these other two guys here, so I'll take any heat that comes from. I got raw shoulders. I want to give you a list of roads. It's not just in my district, it's in the other districts that need to be ditched, culverts, trees trimmed, and then need to be paved. County highway budget, what, three point two million dollars? Payrolls a million. At least two point two, tops another million for parts, supplies, so, so forth. So we got this little million dollars maybe to do anything with. I'm going to give you a list. I want these roads priced out in their entirety, ditches, culverts, tree trimming, and paved. I want to see where we're at, because how much does it cost to pave a mile of road?
About ninety-eight thousand.
Ninety-eight thousand? Let's just round it up to a hundred and make, I like that number. Hundred thousand dollars to pave a mile of road. That doesn't include ditching, culverts, tree trim.
About a hundred ninety thousand.
Crazy? Hundred ninety thousand dollars for a mile of road? Hallelujah. We're putting together a plan. It's going to be very effective. And we're going to approach this plan and we're going to make it happen. All three of these guys, or these two guys here, I appreciate everything you've done. I know he's been on many roads, took many calls, looking at a lot of things. We're going to, we're going to head to his address now, Greg. We got a plan in place. We're going to be meeting with some people. And hopefully, we're going to get some real good information. It is time that we got busy on the roads. The taxpayers out there sitting here or listening deserve better than what they're getting.
I agree.
So we're going to go after it. We have to go after it. I drove a lot of county roads, different counties here all back. Spent several days doing it, looking at things. I'm tired of scraping on the crumb. We're not going to be picking up crumbs. I'm tired of the crumbs. We need some real cash. I'll be getting you a list of roads and these guys will be adding to it too. We just need to, we need a cost.
We can do that. Then, you know, Commissioners, I've sent you some emails on some different locations where citizens have concerns about stop signs and et cetera. I need to do some road studies, put some road counters out. And I'm going to go ahead and get that together for you, just so you have it. It doesn't need to be. Once I get it together, I'll make it official, but if anybody sees road counters out and, you know, cameras at different locations. Those are those we're doing a study to try to get you the information so you can decide if you want to, you know, place signage and that kind of thing. And you're going to start seeing that in locations.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Speaking of signs, the stop signs at the three-way there on Texas Bike and Clark, two of those three are now gone completely. Are people taking them?
Yes.
Yes, they're not there anymore. They've been taken.
Yeah, we put them up, they steal them.
Okay. Well, I, I thought, well, maybe they're working on them, so I figured I'd ask you next time I come around.
No, we basically stop signs as speed limit signs don't mean nothing in the county anyway.
No.
Sheriff Clark, you agree with that, stop signs? I asked Sheriff Clark, he said, he's former sheriff back there, Hendrix County, great guy, good sheriff. And our, our current sheriff, you know, stop signs and speed limit signs. I don't know. It seemed like a waste of a lot of money putting those out, don't it? Everybody should have a men working or a stop sign or some high water sign in their garage by now. Mine's mounted up on the side of my garage. You know, so.
Well, gentlemen, on the Genon Cataract Road project, as of the date, we've lost nine road close signs.
Nine?
Oh, excuse me, ten.
I, I don't know what, I don't know what they're interested in.
I imagine they're pretty cheap, right? We can just pick those up anywhere.
Oh, yeah.
Seven. They're fifty-seven dollars a piece.
Yeah.
Good. What they go, it's a hundred.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Can we be excused?
Yes, you may. Head out. Department heads? Oh, Ed something on the highway, yes.
Greg.
Hey, Greg?
So we've all been working together for the last several months trying to get the highway back on track and, and all of that. I'm asking that Benita takes over and is solely the one who reads the claims. She has gotten pretty good at getting them pulled together and stuff, submitting them like normal. And, and I can't afford twenty more emails a day, nothing against her, just to keep looking at what is coming in. We know where we're at in our funds and our line items and, and I will look at them once they're submitted. And with claims, we do need the claims to be a little bit more detailed. It, it just says something like, there was one that you had asked about yesterday, so we'll have to call and say, what was this or whatever? But I want to be done with that part of it. I want them to be able to at least process their own claims and turn things in and we'll keep monitoring line items and fund balances. Please, thank you.
I'm good.
Good with that?
We're good with that.
Sheila indeed being great. I mean, Sheila, I could have paid her money. And these too, thank you all, so.
Yeah, we're good with that.
Thank you.
Public, Department heads? Public? Oh, wait a minute. What? Are you Department head? Yeah, I guess you're.
I actually, just, our car, I know we talked before about some other options, but I took, sent it in for a change this week and got work back that all four of our wheel bearings are bad and some major repair costs is coming in and all that.
Yes.
Yeah, so. Yeah.
Two weeks.
Okay, perfect. I may just wait on.
Borrow my truck, you need to go somewhere. We're not going to spend the money. He's got a vehicle coming.
Hold out for two weeks.
We'll hold out. Thank you.
And then also, I don't have a license for Adobe online computer. I think that's something that has to be, you guys, so.
I'm assuming you guys got a site license?
Yes.
I'll, I'll email Orion.
Will you also add, because in order for us to be able to get stuff on, thanks Orion, to the county webpage, we've got to have Adobe.
Adobe Pro also. We were just told that yesterday. Well, I think it's going to cost the website.
Well, see, the problem is, or at least the way Adobe is set up in ours, is we have to give them the email of who's going to be signing in and using it. So if there's multiple people, there's not to be multiple licenses, so.
And I think that reasoning, in the past, only one of your's office was allowed to post stuff for everybody. Then we were told you had everything to, I didn't just say our's office, it was another department. And that that posting was posting everything. The way the new webpage is, everybody is supposed to be able to post on their own webpage. And, and I don't want to be responsible for posting information, prime example is plane commission issues. To, you know, that's theirs. I don't know what requirements are for boards and that. I don't want to go and say, okay, Heather, what is this? Or whoever the department is. So there's something else we need to do different or figure it out to, because I do know the cost for each of the licenses. And that hasn't been able to get anything. They're still working on it. There are still issues with the webpage if anybody's complaining. Just because, again, we can't get stuff posted and we just was told yesterday that we needed to get the Adobe.
Suggestions, other counties have raised the same problem. And a creative way is if you establish a single email address, there's a generic address such as web administrator or administration for Oakland County. And that email then can be used collectively by any person to go in and use the Adobe site to do their updates to the weather. That email is only used for that one purpose. Then it can be shared amongst other people.
It, it can, but you can't have more than one person logged in at a time.
Well, and we do have that. We've done that with Adobe before. Now I know that in our auditor's office we have it, but we have the generic email.
Yeah.
So we can set something up and we'll get Dave on that because he's really, Dave Martin is building the sign.
So we may have enough license already then, if, if there's already one set up that way.
But it's not a pro.
It's not pro. Well, I know, I just sent one out yesterday. It was a hundred and fifty-seven dollars. I mean, it's not crazy expensive, but it's, it's not a drop in the budget either, so. I'll email Orion and, and make this suggestion where we have this generic email that you guys can use.
Or Apple, because then they're not, not everybody else.
And then I'll see what he says, because he may have a site license that gets him a better price here. I mean, we have one, but ours is kind of high and we don't have a lot of people in it, so. All right?
Appreciate that, because I don't, I have no idea what you're talking about. Public comment? Well, you're late. Well, I didn't say, go ahead.
It's been brought to, it was brought to our attention quite some time ago that you do not have a current contract with the EPC. I think, and that's has to come from the Commissioners.
I didn't hear you probably with who?
The Economic Development Corporation.
Okay.
And Anton and I were talking about that this morning, and that's something that, you know, we would like to see. At least then, you know, see it moving forward for budget area and to get that in place. He, it's not, we've not had one since I've been on the last five years, the Economic Development.
Do they have a contract drafted up?
Uh, that I do not know, like I said, it's not even been an, an issue, but it needs to be done. So.
I'm, I'm kinda a lawsuit, I really don't know, I guess, I have to check into who, who's responsible for getting that contract drafted up.
Well, it's gonna come from the commissioners.
Is there, has there been a contract in the past anywhere?
There, Anton says there was, but I said, like, it's been before I ever came on, and it's something that should be clearly.
Been done for five years I've been here.
Yeah, it's not been since the five years I've been on either, but it's something that needs to be done.
Well, if Anton has information about that, he needs to present that to us. I don't know what, I, I don't, I don't know what's talking about.
Marcy should have.
We'll check with Marcy.
Marcy, okay. I mean, if there's one in the past, kinda like to look at.
I'd like to see a, I mean, see a copy and go over it myself.
Yeah, I, I wanna definitely see a copy of it, 'cause I've never seen one before. You haven't, you have, yes, Pam?
Public comment? The contract in the past, I have seen one from several years ago. It's generated by the Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Corporation, they're responsible to generate that. It's their request to us to have an agreement in place, and that's important, especially this year, because there are potentially new funding opportunities and revenue sources for this county that instead of giving all of those funds to Economic Development Corporation, that you might be able to redirect that specifically for infrastructure to roads. So, that contract is really essential to look at and to look further about limiting how much just goes into EDC and how much of that could be redirected to help you support your infrastructure.
I wonder why it's not been brought to our attention that we've not had a contract with, I mean, I don't.
I brought it to the attention of the prior board commissioners. I've not been able to get a copy of the last few years of the agreement or contract. And I believe Marcy came in one time and provided her document, but that is not archived through the records. She was off this, looked very, very hard, could not find the document, but about four or five years ago, there was one in place.
Okay, well, then, we'll need to check into that, 'cause they would have a contract from years ago. But, I, I'm a little confused about that, but let me, let me check into that and see what it is. I have no idea what it is, but if the EDC is going to have a contract with the commissioners, I'm a little confused as to why they haven't brought it to anybody's attention here.
Well, the Chamber of Commerce is actually operating in some kind of under one entity. It's Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Corporation, so there are one, there are one name, one title, but they come to the commissioners at times, sometimes under the chamber, addressing funds and different events, and.
Okay, I'll check with Marcy to find out. Last couple of things, the jail guys getting ready to take off, and I told you an hour ago, Dennis. Uh, we're having our apple butter festival on the.
Application.
Yeah, it's right up here somewhere. And look, here. Special event. We just need to prove the Chamber, Chamber, Alliance Club to hold their apple butter festival on courthouse lawn like they do every year and waive all fees. I'll make a motion we prove the application. All in favor? Free old. Well, any other public comment? Dennis? Glad you're here. Uh, you sent an email the other day about Brett Wood Memorial?
Yes.
About, they're coming through to honor him, he was killed in service, a local resident. Do you know when they're coming to do that yet, Dennis, are you getting details on that?
I'm getting details, uh, it should be here sometime middle of September. I'll look at it, look at the days for the apple butter also, it should be the week, week before that.
Well, I just told it out there, he was an Owen County resident, he died serving our country, so whatever we need to do to help him, the team coming in to honor them, whatever they need from us as commissioners, or from, speaking for the citizens, I guess, too, but they can have the courthouse lawn, the whole entire lawn, they can have whatever they need from us, we'll provide whatever they need for this service. Pass that on, okay?
Dennis, I'm calling now. September fourteenth is the selected date, as of last, yesterday.
September fourteenth. I figure, Sunday, whatever day they wanna have, yes, Pam?
Uh, the family had also posted on Facebook, they are trying to reach out to our county if there are any facilities that might offer accommodations for them to bring the people in. They have people coming in from out of town, locals, they like to stay together, so they put out a plea asking for, are there any B and Bs? Are there any facilities? And this is something that maybe the community can hear, and if, this would be a great thing to support.
Oh, absolutely.
So, I received some of the information through the Williams Park request on that.
I know they talked about the canyon inn and hotel here, and maybe up at Mulfordale and stuff like that. I know a couple of people here are local, it's got a couple, or, or, whatever you call them. Yeah, it's a good thing.
But if there's a collective way to get that information back, we need to prove our veteran service officer.
Well, we, we need to go above and beyond to help our servicemen and women, whatever it takes. Anybody else, public? Those jail guys, they're starting to boil there a little bit. Okay, with no further ado, Jeff Peters, are you still here? About to pass out over there, isn't she? Uh, the jail project, get just, just two minutes scope on my end of it. This has been a long time coming, almost sixteen years. The commissioners have agreed to swap some land through the RDC involvement in getting this done. Some acres down on forty-three for about ten acres out of the quarry, give or take, right? The board of commissioners, by state statute, have to provide the sheriff with the jail for his prisoners. The current jail that we have is a turd. Anybody ever seen a turd in a punch bowl? We have a thirty-eight-year-old jail that's falling apart, sheriff spending money trying to keep it afloat. Sheriff Clark from Hendrix County is here today as well. I know he built, they had to build a jail some years back. We, we're not going to delay this jail process anymore. Uh, we've kicked the can down the road, we don't have no more road left, and we have no can left. So, the rubber's gonna meet the road some today, we also have a meeting next.
Friday the fifteenth is ten A.M.
Friday the fifteenth at ten A.M. This'll be for jail only, it'll be nothing else discussed in this meeting except for jail. Uh, we have BW here today, they're gonna present their case or whatever, however you wanna call it. Jeff Peters is here today to listen in on the fifteenth, Garmont will be here, as well as Mr. Peters, to provide a financial analysis, statement, recommendation, whatever you wanna call it, sir, to this county. I said in the last meeting, at the commissioners' meeting, that we have been collecting a, a facility tax for our fifth year now, and we're collecting public safety tax, two different taxes that is going to help facilitate building a jail. We haven't turned over a stone yet. So, this is where the rubber meets the road. We're either gonna turn over the stone, and we gotta find a way, and this is where the council will be involved, Mr. Peters as well, as the commissioners and the sheriff. We have to find a way to build this jail. Today, now, immediately. We, we are not going to wait till next year. The commissioners have to provide a facility for the sheriff to house his inmates, to keep them protected as well as, as his employees in the. We're not gonna spend millions of dollars on refurbishing a turd. You polish a turd, it's still a turd. So, BW here today to present their facts, next week, Garmont, Mr. Peters, and anybody else that wants any input from the jail, whether you're, you're BOT, you're general contractor, please come to the meeting next week. Bring your facts, bring your ideas, because this board of commissioners is going to figure out relatively soon what we're gonna do to build a jail, 'cause we have to, we, we have no choice. And the council, I know it's, it's, it's a difficult situation for them, for the money with Senate Bill One changes and the, the tax thing, but we told the public, right out there in the meeting five years ago, when we established the correctional facility tax, that we was going to build a jail. We ain't done nothing yet. We've saved three and a half million dollars, sheriff give or take, dollar or two. Hopefully, they have about four million to go to the jail project at the end of the year. We've established a public safety tax that pays for the sheriff's budget in its entirety. It's not what it was intended for. Yeah, we've had some financial problems, and we still have financial problems, council knows that very well. It's not gonna take away from the fact we're gonna build a jail. If it comes to the point that the finances state that we cannot build a jail, it is my recommendation from the commissioners, and just mine only, that we do not keep the correctional facility tax imposed against the taxpayers. You're paying for something that you're not getting. It's not right, it's not fair. I don't like taxes anyway, and we don't wanna raise taxes, I think we established that. So, Mr. Peters is our financial advisor, very talented, I think the world of the guy, he knows how to direct us in the direction we need to go, and that's what the commissioner's going to do, and I hope that the council will follow along with it as well. We gotta get a jail built. If we're not under contract this year, this, this, strictly my opinion, we'll not be under contract to build a jail. We're not going to wait until January one to start this all over again. We've got the land swap, we're about done with that, sheriff needs a jail yesterday, is that correct, sir?
Maybe two days ago.
Thank you, two days, maybe a week ago. Yes?
I mean, as the council, we've been on, I mean, understood the need, I think, as much as anybody, of having a new jail. Not been, you know, since I've been on there, we've not been kicking the cane down the road, we've been waiting, finding a place to actually put it, and that hadn't come first. And now that that is actually, has moved forward, and we have a place for the jail, then we're ready to go.
Well, I, I mean, I, I agree with part of that, and I don't agree with part of some of it. I, I think the finance thing is my concern, is, is because that, I think there's some things that could have been done, and that's just me from my end of it.
It was easy to say.
Yeah, it's, it, it is easy to say, I guess. Because if we can't finance a jail, we can't go under contract. So, for the commissioners, we're waiting to see if it's feasibly financially doable before we go under contract, you know, so. And I know it's, it's a tough road to hold, but working together on this, getting it done, we've got a short window to get it done, so. Nevertheless, BW, whatever, you may leave. Are you the, are you the guy leading this? What size that guy? You go first, okay?
We appreciate the opportunity, Kevin.
Yes.
Talk jails and delivery methods, is there a possibility to plug into a screen?
Norm, you're the man.
If not, I'll just. Dustin, Brian.
Do these have Bluetooth on?
You're the IT guy. I don't know anything about, they can have one, it's good, you're just gonna need a long.
If not, I'll turn it around and I can talk.
You leaving? Ideas are good, you guys better have one. It's gonna be a long day. Try my wheelhouse when it comes to IT stuff, sir.
No, I'm not an IT guy.
I'm the shovel guy.
It's turning on that one. That one came on.
This one came on?
We'll take a five-minute break, wait, figuring this out, have a cookie, a cupcake.
Use the restroom, whatever you have to. No. It's not the end of the world, I can turn around, we can.
You're not too young, you're old. We're in an adequate, better drop.
Smart guys.
Not bad. All right, buddy?
If we get hit by a. Yeah, I can, I just gotta get it on my iPad, 'cause I didn't put it on there. Yeah, as soon as I, well. Yep.
How you doing?
Gentlemen.
All right, bro.
Yeah, I've gotta connect to the wifi, it says it's not connecting. I don't think it's got a password, it's just.
Um, Spencer capital S exclamation period.
Spencer, capital S, exclamation period.
Meeting room side. That's what I'm trying to hit. Not for the meeting room side password, there's no password option there. I'm just trying to get, I'm on my hotspot, but it's... Can you go to the, you have the remote for that? We can go to the smartcast. Because I can get it on my computer that way.
So you all track smartcast?
Yeah. Because that should be Bluetooth. Top left button. Two more. Keep going. I don't know if this is it or not, it just popped up. I'll go back to AirPlay, let's see if I can get it. Go back to AirPlay, Greg. Here we go. Yeah, we'll see. It's popped up. Oh, you want AirPlay, because I can't find the code. Oh, AirPlay disappeared.
Hey, Jeff. Jeff? They got their, the issue I asked about, the capital improvement plan. The deputy artist just went in. But the state specifically said, I mean, the state workers said we wanted a capital improvement. That's not what they asked for, they asked for capital improvement. That's what I understand, but thank you.
We didn't beat the points for that.
Sheila? I'm hearing that I turned the camera off to the audience. The B. I don't know how, but...
It's not recording?
Oh, no, it might pull up.
The microphones were off, it should be recording now.
Let's proceed.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to come in and tell you a little bit about the BW team and some of the projects we've done, and then this presentation is more focused on the build operate transfer delivery method, and just giving some background and what that looks like and how we operate there. We can talk about anything that is on your mind as well. So, again, Dustin Frye, president and co-owner of BW Construction. So, a little bit about BW. We were established as a new company in late 2017. We were, had a development arm at the time, BW Development, and decided that it would be beneficial to build our own developments. My partners at the time had a design and engineering firm, and that was the birth of BW Construction. And over the last eight years, we've grown significantly. Our bread and butter and focus on most projects is the municipal, public safety, and jail construction. So, three partners, about forty employees, and do the majority of our work here in central Indiana. We have a few other entities that we feel makes us well-rounded in what we're doing. BW Construction, as mentioned, construction management, general contract, the build operate transfer, we serve as owner's technical rep on a lot of projects as well. We have a company called BW Facility Management. So we have techs on the ground, so if we build buildings, we can service those buildings after they're complete. Also do property management, brokerage, and do that for not just buildings we build, but a lot of third-party commercial clients. And then, as mentioned, BW Development. So we do public-private development under BOT. We invest in many of our own projects as well. Build a suit and lay it on. So we're diverse in terms of the services that we provide. In terms of recent BOT projects, here's a list of projects that we've completed and/or some of these are still active and going on. I just wanted to highlight the specific projects as it relates to BOT. A few jails that we've done as a BOT, Carroll County Jail, which looks really familiar to the drawing over here on the wall. Clay County Jail, Delaware County Justice Center, we're currently working with Grant County to, in a similar position as you have a turd of a jail, and we're trying to figure that out with them. As well as other diverse projects, fire stations, police stations, libraries. So, when it comes to public municipal construction, there's numerous delivery methods that you have at your fingertips to deliver that. Happy to go into any of these. We've delivered projects, and every one of these delivery methods. Design bid build, typical. The original. Hire an architect, complete a design, publicly bid it, go build it. Construction managers, agent or advisor, construction manager at risk, or CMC. Design build, which isn't really used as much anymore publicly on the public side. And then obviously the build operate transfer, Indiana Code 523. My opinion takes a lot of the positives from each one and kinda combines it into one simple delivery method for use. I know some questions that were asked about BOT, so we figured we'd take some time to talk through that. Key points to talk about. It's a very scripted RFP, RFQ process. The state statute is pretty clear in what needs to be a part of that RFP. It is ultimately a qualifications-based selection. And one of the main benefits of that process is once you've completed that selection, that fulfills the public obligation from a bidding perspective, which provides ultimate flexibility to you as the commissioners as you move forward in negotiating with contractors, subcontractors, and the team alike. There's a very defined scoping period. That scoping period after selection is the process in which you're vetting out your site, your design, working on a culmination of determining what you're, what's the minimum scope you're gonna get for the maximum price you're gonna get, and creating what we call a guaranteed maximum price. It's one of two delivery methods that you, as an owner, get a guaranteed price, and you know what that project's gonna cost for the scope that is defined. I mentioned input and subcontractor selection. The, there's not a public bidding, you're not, what you did today when you determined, you know, who's turning in the bids and what that costs. You've completed that with the RFP process, and so the construction manager, developer, one of the same terms. In a BOT, will bid to subcontractors, but there's the ability to negotiate with that, to find the right team members for the project.
Can I interrupt you on something?
Yes, sir.
So with that being said, on BOT, will the commissioners have input? I'm a backup. I'm big on using local contractors. If we can't use local contractors, we ain't gonna do it. We got concrete people, electric people here, so this is in that wheelhouse for selection of local, like we can bid out the concrete, bid out the electrical, bid out the HVAC, bid this all out to where local contractors will have the avenue to bid on these projects, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
To that point, Commissioner, Bert Lannan, it also allows you that flexibility, right? So say John Doe's electric company comes in with an absurdly low bid, but you guys know that they don't do what's called work as Josh Schmidt's electric company, and they're slightly more expensive, you're not gonna be forced to select just the cheapest ones to get the one that's gonna give you the most maximum value.
Well, that is gonna be my next question, our hands are not tied to select the lowest bidder.
Correct. That's a meeting that we have, as we collect the bids from the bid packages, we put a tab, we vet them, and then we would sit in a meeting with the decision makers, you guys, and go through who we would recommend. So while you, it's great that you have flexibility to get the team that you want, you also have the flexibility of, frankly, there are bad subcontractors out there, right? You don't want them working on your job. Transparency is one of those things that we, it's one of our core values, we wanna be open and honest, share in all of our costs, all of our subcontractors. That's not a requirement of the state statute, that's just, that's something we do different. We think every dollar that we're putting in the project, everybody's gonna work on it. You guys need to see that, you guys need to know who does and be involved in. Zero change orders, again, guaranteed maximum price. When you get through the scoping period and you enter into a BOT agreement, you have the scope defined, and you have the price and schedule defined. And unless you go change something, there's no opportunity for a change order there. So you know what you're getting, how much you're paying for it, when it's gonna be done, and it's on the BOT team to go deliver that.
The cost change would only be if the scope of work would change.
Yeah, you come in and say, hey, we wanna move this wall, or we need to go do something else, then there's obviously...
So put another way, that means the risk of cost overruns is on your...
Hundred percent transferred to the... So it's by the, it gives the county utmost flexibility. Hundred percent transferred to the... So, that's by the, gives the county utmost flexibility. Just to kind of diagram what that looks like, this is a typical BOT structure. It's a single agreement from the commissioners to what is called in the statute, a developer. The developer then would hold every other agreement that's necessary. Typically, they hold the design agreement, any construction agreement. Many times, that construction agreement is them. The CM is one of the developer. Any FFNE, technology, and then any other subcontract. So, in a jail, there's detention equipment, contractor, there may be some general trades, electrical, painting, concrete, all of them. They're all under a single contract that you have given to, according to the statute, what would be titled development.
So, I hate to ask that question.
No, this is perfect.
So, if we go with build operate transfer, and let's just use your county century, let's say we go with you guys. The county's liability part, if something would happen, everything except for hiring of the architect and BOT, you'd be the only two entities that could sue the county?
Yeah, theoretically. Anybody can sue.
But you would take, theoretically, ownership of any contract, whether it be the electrical contract, the concrete contract, if they got an issue, that liability falls on you?
Yes. Okay. Yep. We provide the necessary insurance. We provide, a performance and payment bond is required as well. So, we hold all agreements. You still have ultimate control in making sure the design's what you want and approving that. As attorney mentioned, hundred percent risk transfer with that guarantee for us, change orders, subcontractors. Another alternative structure, as sort of mentioned there, is we've done this on a number of BOT projects where the owner will hire the architect and engineer outside of the BOT agreement. So, you would have two agreements. You would have your design team, and then you would have your BOT team. That agreement can be assigned into the BOT's management, per se, or it can be separate. We've done it both ways on a number of projects. Our preference is one contract, so you have one source of accountability, and we can work with the architect and engineer to make sure that we're delivering the right project. But it works just as smooth if it's outside of it. The only thing that really is different here is, well, we're still given a guaranteed maximum price. Without having a single source of accountability, there's still, there's a risk of, hey, the design's incorrect here. There might be some change orders or use of a contingency to make sure that we accommodate those requirements.
So, going back to my earlier comment, that what you mean is there's some risk for county exposure or a whole portion as a rule of that structure?
Potential, yes, yes.
So, if we, Elavatus is here, they're here, they're the ones that designed this, and hired Elavatus for the design, and if there's a problem with the design or something like that, that falls on the commissioners?
Yeah.
To figure out how we need to fix it.
Now, we've done that. We did Carroll County Jail with Elavatus, and their contract was held by the commissioners. The BOT agreement was held by the commissioners. There's no issues there. You know, we would have, very transparently with you, what we would call a design contingency. Because stuff happens, right? Things happen on a project. And there's an issue, there's an RFI, it has a cost to it. We bring that to you. We go through the design contingency. It doesn't necessarily result in a change order to the project. So, again, it's whatever your preference is. We understand Elavatus is on this project. It's a great partner to have.
So, with Elavatus, since you're here, and they've drafted, designed this, and it's a nice jail. I think it's wonderful. And they get into it, and they realize, oh, we screwed up here. Is that on Elavatus, or is that on the commissioner?
Our contract, typically, our contract with you there is, there, you would have a contingency for those kind of things. I mean, obviously, if it's some major, I mean, you know, some major thing, that how could you guys have screwed that up? That's on us.
Okay.
But if it's a standard or a little coordination thing, or something that needs to move six inches or something to make it work, and it costs, you know, two thousand bucks, that's what that, the design contingency that you would hold as an owner.
So, in other words, under your contract, the commissioners are at risk for that contingency, whatever amount that is?
Well, it's usually an amount that the contractors would hold.
I don't get a fixed price, in other words. I don't get a fixed price like a buy if it says, my price is X, and it's not gonna change. Under the kind of contract you're talking about, it's not a buy, there's a risk of additional money on top of the contract price. Yes?
Yeah.
Yeah, that is my question. I'm not saying anything is gonna go...
No. There's the risk there. Ultimately, the GMP, as we put that together and would be in conjunction, if this is the structure that you chose to go with, we would be working, depending on the level of design at the time that you want a GMP, that's, contingency levels fluctuate. The further you have design, the lower they become. They're within the guaranteed maximum price, and then we use those for, if there's a design coordination item or something happens that we need it. We go through that, we track it, and at the end, there is typically a change order, and that's to remove any remaining contingency and return said contingencies back to the county.
I will add, Sam.
Yes.
This is a tried and true design. It's been used by multiple agencies, this exact design. So, we know that it works because other counties have used it.
So, if it would be on the minimum scale, something would be...
We literally just finished this same jail in Carroll County, and so...
So, that is the Carroll County jail?
I would add...
Some modifications.
There's been some modifications. So, not everything is tried and true. I mean, it is a, it is a very good replication of Carroll County, Indiana, Lawrence County, Missouri, although there are some modifications by the Carroll...
Nothing's perfect.
It's very similar in Indiana.
There's some interior wall movements, basically, how convenient in a nutshell, some interior wall movements that took place versus Carroll County.
Right. I mean, we have a set of drawings that are, we can take Carroll, because here, that's the same set of drawings. But no, I mean, there's...
Sure. Oh, yeah. Well, I think the one thing that's, you know, you always have to keep in the back of your mind, being in the construction business, change orders are key. If you don't have a grip on what's being done or how it's being built, stuff like, change orders eat you alive. And for us, and for the council, you know, we have a very small window for any type of, what I would call a major change order. Nothing's perfect. Things happen. We understand that. But we're just trying to make sure we can narrow down that scope of potential change order to about the size of a pencilhead. You know what I'm saying? So, go ahead, sir.
Yeah. No, all good points. The one positive, even though it's not identical to Carroll County, is we've went through that drawing. We've gone through with, you know, dozens of RFIs. So, you're sorting through what would have been potential problems continues to refine.
Chris?
Is there any way to find out what kind of change orders that these other jails had? You know, if this is the same design that's built, basically, the same design built at a location, what kind of change orders do those locations have that we would have to consider and be ready to address?
I mean, we could come up with that. I mean, there's, everything's site-specific, you know, something would apply.
Yeah. That's a good question.
We have our logs from Carroll County Jail that we can go through. Anything that's applicable, make sure it's right before you start this potential project. Site civil's totally different, obviously. This is just a summary of the process. Happy to share this and get to you. This is where you actually talk about the RFP process. I would select it going into a scoping period under an agreement where you define the schedule, the design, GMP, and then you enter into the actual BOT agreement. We'll say, say you get to the end of the scoping period, and the price isn't what you wanted. There's no obligation to go into a BOT agreement. You have the flexibility to end it right there and say, hey, we can't do that. But assuming that's not the case, you go into a BOT agreement, that contract formally approves all the design documents and the GMP and the schedule. Again, we run a hundred percent open book process. You know what our staff costs are, what our fees are. You'll see what's being expended out of contingency. Those contingencies come back to you if they're unused at the end of the project. Once you're into the BOT agreement, the construction process is much like any other project. The architect's gonna do their construction administration will walk through. We're gonna have third-party testing people to make sure what's getting put in by contractors meets the spec. And then, the O and T of BOT, build operate transfer, that's where you have some flexibility. Typical transfer is upon substantial completion, where the building's able to be used and signed off by all local permitting and everything. The architect, that property is transferred, that building is transferred to the county. There's flexibility to talk about ongoing maintenance, other things outside of warranty period. All of that's available in a BOT. It can be discussed and is flexible to meet the needs that you have. And then, we do regular warranty walks throughout the first year of the project, and then we come back every year for the next three years and just walk through the building and make sure that it's functioning to the way it's supposed to be, and help through that process to make sure you have the product at the end of the day that you...
When you talk about the warranty, what is your warranty on the structure? So...
So, standard warranty of one-year workmanship for everything in it, and then different pieces, as their design, equipment may have a five-year warranty for a manufacturer. Metal building may have different warranties for structure, for roof, all of those things. They're all as part of what is ultimately designed. But we, subcontractors and us do one year. That's a pretty standard. You can ask for two years. That's an option that we can price into the project and see what that would cost from a subcontractor perspective.
I'm thinking for twenty-five million dollars, that oughta come one year warranty.
Again, it's all flexible in what you want. Industry standard for a project is, here's the one-year warranty of what that means.
But you can buy extended warranties, so to speak.
Yeah. Now, so you go through the list of projects we've done. A police station we did five years ago. We were out there a month ago fixing some things that came up because it was the right thing to do. Yeah. Windows had a manufacturer's issue. The manufacturer said, hey, we're not, that's outside our warranty. We said, well, it shouldn't have been that way. So, we went and replaced a handful of those. At the end of the day, we're not trying to come and just do a single project.
And as you know, sometimes that becomes a gray area with some people, and if the window comes, sits outside of ours, then builder says, sorry, we're not gonna do it. I kind of, I agree with Dave here a little bit. On a project this big, I would like to see what the cost would be for extended warranties.
Absolutely.
I don't think one year is sufficient. I mean, that's just, so if you guys can...
Yep, absolutely.
Come up with that cost, what that would be?
Yep.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
For sure. I don't have much more to add from a BOT perspective. Talk about us if necessary. We appreciate the opportunity. If there's any questions or you need any information about our pricing, on the Carroll County Jail, we're happy to provide that.
I have a question for you.
What's that?
Typically, what is your piece of the pie, so to speak? When we're talking about a twenty-five million dollar project, that's kind of a hard number for us. So, you see this design, you've worked with these people before. How much is your part of it gonna cost us? Rough guess, I'm not gonna hold you to it. I'd like to know an estimate.
Yeah. I could give you that. It would be, what we get paid on is our, the time for our people that are managing the process and the project, our covering our insurance for that, and then a fee. I think our fee for Carroll County was in the three to three-and-a-half percent range.
Okay. Three to three-and-a-half percent. How long will it take you to build a jail? Is this, of this, what the sheriff's needing here? Let's say we're all ready to go and...
Yeah, we've got permits and everything, you know, approximately eighteen to twenty months.
Eighteen to twenty.
Depends on the time of year, lead times, and other things. There's a lot of variables that go into that.
Yeah.
So, my next question for you, sir. Elavatus, one of you's, doesn't matter which one. How comfortable are you with this type of setup? It sounds like you've worked with this company before. Yes, no?
Yeah, we've worked with BW in Carroll County. That's the only project that I've worked on. Our firm has worked several others. And it was like a typical project. I mean, once you start construction, it was like any other project.
And was it a BOT setup?
How did you do on the budget?
We came in under the price that we gave the commissioners.
That's always good.
And we had to pump groundwater for some unforeseen things for months.
How much did Carroll County cost to build that jail? Do you roughly recall? Was it twenty-three million?
Right around.
Twenty-five?
Just under twenty-five.
Just under twenty-five?
I can get you that detailed pricing.
Twenty-three?
And how long ago was that one done?
May.
May of this year?
Cut the ribbon, earlier this year.
Did it take eighteen to twenty months to go?
I believe it's right around there now.
It took me nine months for that one. From the time they broke ground to date finished.
Nine months?
Nine months.
He's saying it took them long?
It was nine months, no.
According to their sheriff, you said that it was nine months from when they first broke ground until they were done with construction.
That's not true.
We're not building a jail in nine months.
That's just what the sheriff said.
I was gonna say, if you build it in nine months, you guys get additional equipment in now.
Yeah, for sure.
So, I'm gonna ask the same question next week when the rest of the group show up. How long does it take to get the materials, get the jail? Pod system?
Steel cells.
Steel cell. How far out is this stuff? There's only one or two companies now? Or just one company in Georgia that builds these pod systems?
The steel cells are manufactured in Georgia, yes.
Who's manufactured?
Steel cell.
Steel, they're the only people in the country now that does steel cells. Is that correct?
I mean, there's other, there's Cornerstone and a few others, but from a quality, durability, getting them, that's what we would recommend.
How long does it take to get this stuff? Let's say we agree this is what we want to do, and I'm gonna be asked the same question as everybody else, too.
Yeah.
Because time is, I mean, we talking, take a year to get the equipment, get, you know, stuff?
Different pieces of equipment take different amounts of time. It, you know, if you... You know, if you have the documents, you know, later this year, that eighteen month schedule's feasible.
Is that feasible? Okay, that's.
We're not seeing the lead times. We saw post-COVID on things. Things are getting back to normal.
Lead time, that's a word I couldn't figure out, lead time, so, okay.
Yeah, I can. Yes, absolutely.
One thing I would add too is if you guys choose to go this route, we have to have what's passed, what's called a BOT resolution. It's just a simple note from the commissioner saying that they allow the county to do a BOT. If you've never done one before, so it's pretty standard. You can vote on it, you can sign it, and it turns into BOTs.
But you'd also work if we are a, a general contractor, general manager for the project. You'd work well with the general manager as well?
Yeah.
Just want to make sure everybody's going to get along.
Yeah, for sure.
I mean, you guys are kicking up dust out there in the middle of fields, you know what I'm saying?
Create a good team.
Because I know there's several ways we, yes, Mr. Peters, yes.
I just wanted to ask one final question for you guys. How far away are we from the sign that you would write in the GMP where we would be ready to bid? What's that?
That's an Alavatus question.
Okay, that, that is a little open ended because, uh, one, we got to come up with the, understanding what's happening with utilities, because that's a big, that's a big issue with the site and getting utilities and where that money's coming from. Is that in, in the project, throughout the project? What is the, what is the project construction budget? I've heard, you know, twenty-five million all in, so we got to start packing things out for that and figure out what that. So, that plan, I will tell you, is probably not a twenty-five million dollar one. I mean, it's, it's a little bit bigger, right? That plan is a little bit bigger than, than, uh, here, what Carroll County. It's a little bit more administrative.
You're, you're asking a very good question and I probably don't have to answer this either yet. In my understanding, twenty-five million, we're all in. We're all in twenty-five million. Sewer, electricity. We have a, we have a road out there that doesn't belong to the county. That's got to be considered too. Belongs to Bob Winters still. And I've talked to some of the family about that. Is that correct, Paulie? Do you, I mean from?
Yeah, it has to include sewer.
So, if, if twenty-five, let's say we're all in at twenty-five million, that's going to include sewer, utilities, road, agreement, you had twenty-five million. So, when you add in those costs, um, that could be a change factor for the sheriff. If those costs are substantial to where it reduces his scope of work to get us in that. And I think that's where Mr. Peters is going to be able to help.
And that's where that plan is. So, if you're asking when, when I have a whole set of drawings to be able to be bid, that is, we've, we've got a three month term, you know, because, you know, it's been done previously. But I mean, it's going to, it's still going to take several months to get this drawn, to that.
Three months and that's at least three or four years.
With, with that, okay, so now I'm going to put you on the spot. So, this is August. We've got September, October, November, December.
Yeah, I, that, I don't know when the clock's going to start.
Right now.
Because if I, if we start it right now, we're going to, we're going to, you know, understand where all the, what's in the budget.
Well, you know, referring back, you know, this is what the sheriff is, is, is needing. Okay, and I'm not going to discredit what the guy needs. I've been there. I know what he's up against. So, this is what the sheriff needs. This is what the sheriff needs. Now, our budget's still going to be our budget. But if it's going to take three or four months to get a set of plans ready to go so we can bid that, you need, you, you need to go get started. That, that's because, just my opinion, then Mr. Peters is going to give us the financial crunch and he's going to be here again next week to tell us, to help the council, to tell the commissioner, here's what you have. This is, this is all you can afford and this is how we're going to pay for it. Because that is the multi-billion dollar question. It's not about building a jail. We know we got the land, we can build a jail and stuff like that. The question is, how much can we spend and how we're going to pay for it? And that's where this guy comes in. But far as the plans are concerned, if that's what the sheriff's needing, that's what the sheriff needs. If that makes sense.
With that, with that statement, that is a plan that is, that's that plan, so that plan costs X. They're going to tell us what X is. And if it's more than twenty-five, well, twenty-five's not the number you're using anyway because you got to take out, you know, utility costs to get the utilities there. I mean, that, there's always some site, you know, site costs involved. When we were talking about how far the sewer comes down, you know, if this has to go down the highway, that's, that's outside of the scope of any, you know, any project.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, that's what I'm trying to.
I see.
We got to, got to, but the number's going to be what, the number's going to be if, if we say that's what, that's what the sheriff wants.
Yeah, because we got to, we got to consider everybody's cost. Their cost, this cost, water cost, utility cost, road cost and all that stuff caused. And with Mr. Peters, that's, he's going to be the guy that tells us, this is what you got. Then that's where you or whatever company, you, this where we all sat down at the table and say, this is what we got. And sheriff sits down and we all said, this is, this is what we got. It's going to cost us this, this, this and this. And sheriff, you can have this. Or sheriff, you're going to have to.
And, and that's, that's what we, from the beginning, we've always said, that, that we knew money is, is an issue which is on the project. That we're going to design to the budget. I mean, that's, that's what we have to do, design to the budget.
That's what, good words I'm looking for. I'm just not very good at my language, so.
And that's what, that's what we have to do and, and that means that when that building is, you know, a hundred square feet smaller, we're going to figure out a way to make that affordable.
That's, that's all I need to know, but we could have this done, everything, before the end of the year. Because we have to. See what I'm saying? We keep, we don't go into January discussing this. Either it's done this year or, I don't know what to tell the, the sheriff. If that makes, yes?
Does twenty-five million cap include interest, bond fees? Do we have a backpedal from that twenty-five cap to, to calculate for those loan costs, et cetera? So, we're working with the loan grant?
It, it's got to bend. If, if the cap is really twenty-five million, then, then you have to back everything out, bond costs, et cetera. Interest, we don't normally include in that cost because it gets paid incrementally over the next twenty years. Other than, we capitalize interest during building period, but the discussion we had last night with council and commissioners, potentially when you have to cover the, so you won't have that expense during construction period. But again, you know, we need to sit down with that and have that conversation more. Is it really twenty-five million or is it what you can afford and, and what you can't afford under what grant? Because we do have new legislation that gets rid of all the income taxes that get forced up or any of that pressure that gets to the date. We have additional opportunities, what we're going to talk about next Friday. We have to walk through all those options. But, you know, why I wanted to know particularly about timing is, if we're going to actually try and get funding or monitoring prior to the end of the year, you know, we're going to need that number, is that something that we can get done? Because in order to be eligible for a rating, you have to have had an audit within certain period. Your line's thought at twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four.
She is sitting downstairs as you speak and we should have one in four to five weeks.
For twenty-four. Okay, so that helps, I guess, since it's into twenty-six, that we're still going to be able to get that monitoring. That's what we're closing on, even though we were never already making decisions.
Okay, makes sense. What else you got, big guy?
We're here to help. Appreciate it.
Uh, is any one of you is going to be here next Friday?
Uh-huh, yep.
I, I, I just want everybody at the table.
Yeah.
I don't care what company you're from, who you work with, it doesn't make any difference. Because at the end of the day, we're, you know, we may all have to work together to get this done. It may, it may take the whole court group to get together to get this done. And, you know, we're not looking, um, I'm, I'm not saying we're trying to put the pressure on, but this is my fifteenth or sixteenth year in trying to get a jail built, you know? And the sheriff, I, I, I feel for him. Because since I was the sheriff and that's been a few years back, it's, it's still a turd. And it becomes a bigger one every day. And he can't able to afford to, we, we, we just can't delay it because it's, it's, it's just too costly and the liability, not only for the inmates but for your employees, it just grows more every, every day. So, next Friday, for anybody that can be here.
I would add that it's a liability for the taxpayer.
Yeah.
If we give one lawsuit based on our jail, then we get that lawsuit, we are, we could go bankrupt. In that case, the entire community's taxes go up to pay for a lawsuit. So, this is protection for them.
And, and, and it is and, and on the flip side of that, sheriff, um, I agree wholeheartedly with you. We've been very fortunate up to this date. But then again, if it comes to the point that we simply cannot afford a jail, we have to, we can't continue taxing the taxpayers for something that they're not getting. Because we told them that right out here in this forum, you know, a few years back. So, I think we're on the right track. I, I'm, I'm very positive. I, I think we're going to, I think this is going to get done this year. Mr. Peters is a wealth of knowledge. He's going to be here next Friday to lay it out for us on the financial part of it. The council president is here and, um, I know they got a lot to do too and, um, the, the property transfer, that's, that's a minor detail. It's just putting everybody together at the court group here now and saying, hey, this is what we got. This is what we can do so we can sign the papers and, and somebody bring out a backhoe. I just like to see a backhoe set out there.
We can get a backhoe there.
You know, so just, uh, I'm good. You guys, commissioners, you, you're in top of this? You guys got any questions?
I'm good.
Mr. County Attorney? So, next Friday at ten o'clock is when the meeting will start. I, I appreciate you guys being here. Alavatus will be back. Garmon will be here. Brett, you coming next, you be here next Friday too? Dan, okay. The sheriff will be here, Paulie. You're going to be here. Mr. Peters will be here, commissioners. It's a public meeting. Anybody can come, but it's going to be strictly directed to, um, the entities that's going to present the jail project. Anybody got any other questions? We might have cookies again next week. I don't know, so. Maybe not. Yes, what it was. You know, I thought about ribeyes. You're in? I don't know why we don't have ribeyes. I think we can cook ribeyes out there for everybody, you know, get somebody to do it. Dave likes to cook. Anybody else got any questions? Me, Mr. Jordan, thank you.